All right, six thirty, we'll call the time board commissioners meeting to order. We'll have a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have adoption of the agenda, can we have a motion?
I move to adopt the agenda with an amendment to add rescheduling of land use plan amendment in public hearing to the agenda as only business.
All right, there's a second.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second. Anybody, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, we have consent agenda, so I want to make a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion, second, consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We now have a consent agenda, okay, James, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners. Tonight, item number five on the agenda, this is presentations and reports. This one is on key project updates and the spotlight tonight is on affordable housing. So we go have a, we have a slideshow available here and you'll actually, you'll actually, as we go to the first page on this, wanted to give a little bit of background for our listening audience and those in attendance here in person. So wanted to start a little bit with the who, what, when, where, why, kind of the fundamentals. So who, of course, as we go to this first slide, we'll have a brief moment here, all right. The who, of course, of course, it's affordable housing, it's housing, it's housing for local residents and family members and members of the workforce, et cetera, there's a lot of users of affordable housing. What is it? It's very important to get our definitions correct because there are a lot, there are a lot of definitions bandied about, so sometimes the word is affordable housing, sometimes workforce housing. Dare County started using the phrase essential housing, talking about essential workers and other functions. So the three categories you see here, up, the first one says housing choice vouchers, and that one's up to 50% of the area median income. That is sometimes called section eight housing, and that particular, and that's, that is something that has been well known throughout the years. Next one is more, a more recent approach, it's called the low income housing tax credit properties or LIITAC. In this case, the income eligibility is up to 80% of the area median income. Now, the current stat, the status for Dare County, it would be, that 80% AMI would be $57,750 for a family of four. As we go up, as we go up in income, yes, yes, ma'am, pro temp.
Same with the my, okay.
Yes, ma'am, for a family of four, the 80% AMI is $57,750.
Okay.
Thank you. We also have, we'll also have available, we can make copies of the latest chart that was downloaded from HUD today with the 2021 numbers as they update, update those periodically. The next category, and this is sometimes called workforce housing, but it can vary depending on the jurisdiction, because it's not a HUD definition in this particular case. Typically, what I've seen in other jurisdictions is 80 to 120% of area median income. So in this particular case, somebody eligible for this workforce housing or essential housing, the family of four would make up to $86,640. Think of it this way, if we had one of our public works worker and married to, say, a teacher here in Dare County, they would be eligible for that workforce housing, even as a two-income family. So that's just one example right here locally. Of course, the question where? This is the town of Manial, of course, the town of Manial is looking out for its residents and workers, et cetera, and I put a question mark on the next line, adjacent areas. Now, the reports from Dare County and their consultants in the past showed a massive need for affordable housing in the Outer Banks. I don't think that the second smallest municipality, however, can solve the entire region's problem. We certainly need to take care of the folks right here in this jurisdiction. But the question mark also remains, are there some adjacent areas where there can be some cooperation either with Dare County or some folks here, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. As we go to the next slide, we'll continue the background, it says when. And this board has made it clear, I think the reports have made it clear, the need is now, of course. There are folks right now who need housing, and there are folks who are turning away from Dare County and even the town of Manial because of the lack of housing. So we wanted to kind of break it up into what are the actionable things we can do? What are the short-term things and what are the long-term things? So this slideshow will first talk about the short term and then later some of the long-term things and what steps we're taking to get there. You gotta always ask, why? I mean, this is a fundamental need. Food and shelter are the two fundamental things a person needs or a family needs. We talk about even our community needs, so we have to look at the whole, the community as a whole, those are fundamental things. And it's not just the current folks living here, I mean, we're talking about future generations. Let me give you an example, if, let's say, someone graduates Manial High School, their family's here, and they go off, they go in the military, they get a job, they go off to school, whatever, many times they can't come back because they can't find affordable housing. And that, that creates a brain drain, we're losing the talent, the young people here, we can lose that talent, and I've heard anecdotal, anecdotal evidence of that. How about even the, the folks who we have here right now? I had shared with the board, we talked, the police department, we had our latest police officer, young in his career, multiple staff members trying to find affordable housing. Turns out, after connecting with so many folks, he could only find something about 40 miles away. So, okay, he did find affordable housing, but how does that impact quality of life? And how important is it to have that person serving the community actually living here and breathing here and being part of, part of the community? So it affects more than just individuals here. And of course workforce, you know, we keep hearing about businesses needing staff, but also nonprofits and, and government, local government, and we need, you know, need staff. Flip it around, though, it's not just the employers who need the staff, right? We, as residents or consumers, we need staff to deliver service, we need folks working the grocery store, the auto parts store, or whatever, you know, keeping the restaurant open, so we need those folks just as much as, as they need us, it's a symbiotic relationship, so it's really a two-way street there. And let's even talk about economic growth. Some of the studies that I've seen say affordable housing, the folks who are occupants, users of affordable housing, their dollars often stay at a higher level in the local community. In other words, their salaries go back in, they are loyal to the local community, so staying local, there's actually economic growth even in that alone, much less, again, having a workforce allows businesses to stay in business or expand here locally. And of course, the community fabric, I gave the reference earlier about the police officer. How wonderful is it when someone can actually, you know, walk, live, live in the town that they work, especially a special place like this? So community fabric is important, not just for the folks who are providing services, whether, it's not just a police officer, but it's a teacher or, because many of these teachers coach, some of our police officers coach, having them in the community where they can actually do this instead of spending their time commuting, that really does contribute to the community fabric. So there are a lot of whys, and I think we need to, you know, we want to make sure that we take action to, to help in this situation. So let's go on to the next slide. This, I'm just trying to identify here, sometimes it's called by many things, you know, it can be called community governance and collaborative problem solving, things like that, but, you know, this is a big problem, all right? So we need big ideas, lots of ideas, we also need big efforts, a heavy lift, as they say, and it certainly takes a community effort. This is not just something that one stakeholder can fix, this is something that's community effort. So if you look at that list up there, think of the stakeholders involved, government, we'll talk a little bit what, what government's role can and cannot be, but developers, builders, real estate professionals, of course, these are the folks that build housing, but we have, also have property owners and landowners who may not be into the development, but they have assets that, that may, may come to bear. Subject matter, matter experts, oh my goodness, we've got talent in this community, I mean, folks who are in finance, engineering, architecture, there's a lot of fields folks can bring their talents to bear, and we want that, we want that as part of it. How about the future uses of affordable housing, it'd be kind of nice to know, it's kind of nice, it is absolutely crucial to have them at the table to determine what are their needs, because it's not this one universal profile, there are lots of folks in different family situations and housing situations, seeing what they need, we want to make sure if we, if we deliver something that meets the actual needs of, of the community. Of course, employers, they've got to be part of the solution too, if they need staff, they got to come to the table as well, so it's not just for, again, for one to solve. And there are advocacy groups, I mean, they're, whether it's folks, Habitat for Humanity, or, you know, Chambers, whatever it might be, and of course, funding sources, and not just banks, and we've got different levels of government, we've got foundations, trusts, there's, there's got to, there's got to be money to help, help with this too. And of course, the residents, this community is made up of residents, and, you know, the last line, people want to contribute to the community, there's talent here, there's time here, there's treasure here, there's folks who want to contribute, we want them at the table, so more ideas will help us solve this. As we go to the next slide, let's kind of transition to that short-term approaches, these are things that are, our, the town is already taking steps. So back in October 2020, I gave a presentation about some of the short-term and long-term options, and this board taking action during the budget process, okay, we want to take action, especially these short-term projects, and so the budget, the new budget fiscal year started July 1. On July 2nd, we had a contract signed with an engineer to help us with the conceptual phase of a pilot project. And as you see up on the screen there, that's the property, it's a .909 acre tract, right across from Keeper Arthur's statue, the corner of Biddeford and Sir Walter Raleigh. This property, we wanted to go ahead with conceptual planning, and what one typically does with a development project like this, you start with the fundamentals, you get a survey of, you know, find out where your land is, find out where, delineate your wetlands, that's a big one, start seeing where your store, where your utilities are located, where does your storm water go, all those fundamental things to build up your map, what can we build here? So we are underway with that, I had some, our initial stuff, and in fact, if we go to the next slide, we actually had started to make some progress here, and wanted, as early as, as now, start showing at least some ideas of what we can do. So here's one example, in this particular case, it's a four-lot, single-family subdivision. Now, in this case, you can see the wetlands are shown there, now, they have been marked by, they've been delineated, but they have not yet been approved by the Corps of Engineers with the so-called jurisdictional determination, we're going through that process. But in the meantime, we thought we'd go ahead and start the planning anyway, so you could start seeing what the, what's possible. In this case, a four-lot subdivision, no variance be required, no filling of the wetlands, this would allow four houses here that would certainly have, certainly have room for a decent-sized house on all four lots, albeit with different configurations and different driveways. Let's move to the next slide, though, give you a kind of an alternative approach, as I mentioned, we could consider a single-family or multifamily on the slot based on its zoning and its size. So in this particular case, you'll see a seven, seven townhomes on this property, in this case, these townhomes were considered to be two-bedroom, two-bedroom units, instead of the 1.5 parking spaces per, per unit, it was actually two parking spaces, because we know folks, folks have cars and have to go places, there's even room for a little park area there, and along the, along the Biddeford Street frontage especially, it protects a lot of those big trees, gives a nice buffer, and allows space for, like, kids to go out and do some things, so we can, this is just a very simple, a simple approach here, but it even shows two ways in and out, which helps, the fire, the fire department would love that, motorists like that, et cetera. And in this case, the same rules held true, it's feasible, there's no variance required, there's no filling of wetlands, we wanted to kind of show you, so four units, single-family, seven units, multifamily, achievable and, and available for us to do. So what would be the next steps? Of course, we got to continue our feasibility, finish off our survey work, and get the jurisdictional determination from the Corps of Engineers, but there are some things, some things we could consider doing right now. So go to the next slide here, and let's talk about a couple of different development methods. All right, in this particular case, I believe it's showing method number one, this is kind of the primary role, and I think this was, if I sensed the board's direction during our prioritization for the budget, having a public-private partnership is preferred, where the town has land and has access to utilities and things like that, where we could seek a developer or builder or someone who could, who could partner up with us to put affordable housing units there. Now, what, in a second, you'll see it, I'm suggesting request for proposals, but we know that many of the construction firms and builders and developers are really busy, they may or may not be interested in a small project like this, so we got to have a plan B. The backup plan would be the town is developer and develop the site and, you know, bring in the housing units as a backup, again, that's not necessarily preferred, but we want to make sure that we can all, we can take action on this, no matter what the private sector does with this pilot project. So as an example, path forward, so alternative one, this is kind of the conceptual plan phase, this would be where we put out a request for proposals and get all the builders and developers that we can think of, that you can think of, that our community members can think of, and say, here's a piece of land, here's our survey, here's some conceptual plans, you, Mr. Builder, Mr. or Ms. Builder, Ms. Developer, you tell us what you can do, what you would like to do there. And so that way, it's kind of a, a big bag of ideas, we'll let them tell us what they think they can do and how they can do it. That one is pretty flexible, and we could put, we could put that request for proposals out here in the next 30 days if that's the desire of the board. An alternative, alternative number two, this is where, let's say this board said, no, I only want single-family homes, or I only want multifamily because that's got more density and more units and can help solve, you know, more, more families' needs. So this board may say, I only want to go multifamily, so if we did that, we could go, if the board wanted to refine it to where the site plan looks exactly like they want, we could go through the rest of the conceptual planning and design process, that is in the budget, like we talked about during the prioritization, to have this fully engineered out. So we could do that, take the next several months getting that done, and then put request for proposals out there based on your one chosen design. The one's flexible and quick-hitting, the other one's more specific if you want to narrow in on just one option, so I want to make sure the board had options as you, you know, as you make your decisions here. And of course, there are other approaches as well, just like we talked about our backup plan, but right now, it's possible for us just to go ahead and, and see what's out there in the market, see what partnerships might be available to us. So let's go to the next, let's go to the next page. I'm still on short-term here, believe it or not, so many of you may recognize this particular property, it's a Dare County project, and it's been well discussed, it's, it's often called their Bowser Town project, but that's a bit of a misnomer, if you go to the end of Bowser Town, you're actually making a left on California Road, so what you see there is the, the county owns the property surrounding the boat ramp and right across from our wastewater treatment plant. That particular one, the most recent estimate we had from Dare County was 70 to 75 units in that, assuming they could get utilities, which is the next line, what is the town's role in this? Well, it's just outside our jurisdiction, so our role is simply access to utilities is what, is what they're looking for from us. Now, in my discussion with the county manager earlier this week, they're still working with the University of North Carolina Development Finance Initiative, also called DFI, and in that particular case, they're working with them to do an RFP, of course, a larger RFP with that many units, that they're going to put out to developers around the state and say, okay, here's a project, here's the land, what, what do you need from us? And they expected to have the draft of that coming here in the next month or two, and then it should be out on the street shortly thereafter. So that's one example of the, of a county project that would involve, that would have the town involvement in some way or another. If we go to the next slide, this is another project, if you look at the aerial here, you'll rec, you'll probably recognize the Elizabethan Inn. In this particular case, the town rules might change because the Elizabethan Inn sits on multiple parcels, it has both the hotel as well as some other buildings there, as well as some developable land. In this case, they've got options, and in fact, they're exploring those options right now. And my discussion with the county manager a week and a half ago, on prior Monday, he met with the architect, and they're performing their due diligence on this property as well. In this particular case, obviously, the access to town utilities, that's important, now they already have some access, access to our utilities already, but if they develop more, that's certainly something we need to consider. In this case, town rules, just like happened with the Duke of Dare, they would also access talent here at the town from planning, inspections, a fire marshal, and others, so they can figure out, you know, what to do with that property as they redevelop it. It's interesting to note here also, as we start hearing the, the county's needs, you hear the word utilities come up more than once, so making sure that we have capacity in our wastewater treatment plant now and in the future is really important, because we want to make sure we serve our parcels, the folks, the things that are already in town limit, make sure that we have capacity for that. So the town had already initiated a contract with an engineer for our wastewater treatment plant capacity study, that's underway, we had our kickoff meeting with them and have been sharing data regarding the plant, we're also talking about developable parcels, zoning, and things like that, so we expect to have within the next 60 days a preliminary report on our current wastewater treatment plant capacity. At present, the most recent month's data, we had about 52% utilization of our plant. But again, then we got to compare that to what are the future needs of our already existing properties and property owners, see what, you know, and how that, whether we can accommodate more folks. Also, in the 60 days after that, I've asked the engineer, once we figure out what our needs are, what would be the cause for a future expansion of the wastewater treatment plant? Because that's good information to have in the future, it may be based on current day dollars, but I think the better information begets better decision-making, so we're going to have that as phase two of our wastewater treatment plant capacity study as well. If we go to the next page, let's, let's transition to, to long-term approaches. So on this next page, yes, you see a group of people here, I think some of the, some of the folks here, here tonight were at that, at that particular public meeting, but the comprehensive plan, we've been talking about it, it's, it is not just required by the, by the state by next July, it's something that helps guide development, helps guide our ordinances, and it's really important, in this case of affordable housing, every comp plan I've been involved in has a housing chapter, they want to know what the housing stock is, what are the affordable housing needs, what does it look like going forward, and that's going to be a critical chapter here for this topic. Now, I do want to make sure we announce to the public, we've put out some, a number of save the dates already for September 15th for the kickoff, so the comprehensive plan kickoff, the consultants will be here, actually in the town, and we want to make sure we share, they share with the public, you know, how does this process work? Public participation is key to this, and I can announce tonight that we signed with Roanoke Island Festival Park to host the meeting on the 15th, 5 o'clock on the 15th, right after the board meeting, to go ahead and have this kickoff. We'll get the word out there about that, but we felt we needed a bigger venue, because we thought we'd have more people interested in this comp plan, since it will guide the next five years or so of, of the town. I'm thrilled to note that there's already got a head start on this topic, see, the plan working group and other activities really help inform this, and in fact, the town planner has already shared the reports from the working group, the minutes, notes, all those have been shared with the consultant team, so they're aware of all this hard work. In fact, we've got members of the working group here tonight who actually worked on this topic, so it's really exciting to see that kind of engagement, we want to make sure their work is, is used, is used in this comp plan and is already being considered by our consultant team, so huge, huge head start there. Of course, the comp plan, we have to have the comp plan in place, because that informs the zoning ordinance, and we'll talk about the zoning ordinance in the next slide, but things like density bonuses, or incentives, or accessory dwellings, all these things are part of our zoning ordinance, and having that comp plan gives, especially as we get past July 1, that gives us the authority to, to do zoning, but also then to make sure are there things that we need to update to help this topic or others. So if we go to the next slide, let's talk about our existing ordinances a bit. In this case, I'm talking about current status, so in our existing ordinances, there's, there's a lot of information there. Interestingly enough, I say ordinances because it's in both the codified ordinance and the zoning ordinance, a little bit interesting there, but in this case, let's focus on the main thing, which is affordable housing, residential developments, if five or more units or lots have this affordable housing requirement. So in general, the requirement is 20% affordable, there's a formula in there for that, and whether it's, whether it's in a housing unit or a lot, and these are, you know, these are for, for sale, units for sale, and there's actually a formula in the ordinance, and based on the most recent data, HUD data you heard a second ago, the formula turns out that an affordable home or condo has to be priced by the developer at $183,200 or less. I don't know any, I've been looking at real estate a lot, I don't know, I don't see any new units out there at that particular price range, so that would be pretty amazed, pretty amazing. They also have a calculation for lots, in this case, $45,800 for a buildable lot, not seeing, not seeing those either, but that's what the current formula in the ordinance says they have to be offered at to qualify. Also, the ordinance tries to help the developer then by giving them a density bonus, so in general, like for, for residential units, one market rate unit for each affordable unit, so they get kind of this density bonus. Now, it works really well with condos and such, a little bit harder for lots because they have a square footage requirement, I don't want to get into all the math here tonight, but there is a bonus that's, but it is, seems to be easier for multifamily versus single-family. Also, our ordinance used to have a period of affordability, in other words, you know, they talked about how long would this unit remain affordable? Interestingly enough, that got repealed in 2010, where you no longer have to keep it affordable after its first sale. I give an example, in Cypress Cove, the, the original plat, I think the, the data given to me was 32 lots total, and five of those 32 were affordable, or to be affordable. Now, the county records is recent, that were looked up earlier today, indicate that all five of those have changed hands, and therefore, since they've changed hands, they no longer need to be affordable. So that's just something in our current ordinance that impacts, and impacts this particular topic. If we go to the next page, let's talk a little about philosophical issues, we don't have to answer these tonight, okay? These are, but these are things, as we go through the comp plan, we really need to consider, so let's go to the top one, role of government, and I've worked with affordable housing in the past, some folks say government should be, be doing affordable housing, and some folks say they have no business getting into that, but perhaps we could talk about roles in the middle. The town of Manial, for, and I want, you know, the public here, and our town planner mentioned this at a prior meeting, the town of Manial already established leadership in this area of almost 40 years ago. The town was a facilitator in that case, facilitated a land swap that actually resulted in Bay Tree and Harbertown, so Manial was a real leader in this effort. And now, as we come into the current, in the current era, we want to see what is, what is the town's role again, so is it a convenor role, you convene the parties to, you know, bring people together, are you facilitator again, do we, are we a developer? Maybe for a pilot project, maybe, larger, I'm not sure that's sustainable, are we a supporter? And we also have to remember, it's not the town's, the town's not the only government entity here, I mean, we've got Dare County, of course, working on projects, we've got state and federal government doing things like grants, doing tax credits, and much more, so there are plenty of governmental entities at the table, we need to make sure we interact with them effectively to make this happen. How about the philosophical issue, though, of rental versus purchase? This one is near and dear to my heart, because there are pros on both sides of this. Let's take, let's take purchase first. Purchase, I have seen a previous project where the, it specifically called out a purchase scenario, these units were for sale, and they were intended to help, help families develop generational wealth, in this, because that's, and many, for many Americans, that's the best way to develop wealth is the equity in your home, and pay it off over time, and in many cases, hand it over to the next generation, so that's really an important, you know, important possibly for, for those projects that can do that. But I also know I'm, I'm going to be balanced here, on the rental side, you know, we heard from Dare County's old report that there is a big need for rental housing too, I mean, rental housing is often more accessible to folks needing affordable housing, they don't need a big down payment or anything like that, there is a high level of need, so we really need to be cognizant of, of that as well, so as the town considers its options over the years, I would love to have a balance of both of these, if possible, but that, that decision will have to be made at some point, even with our pilot project to determine, is this project going to be for sale or for rent? And we'd need to be purposeful and intentional as to the, you know, the, both the economic and social benefits of those decisions. Short-term rentals, this is a hot topic around the country, I've been getting, for the last several years, there are a number, number of cities that are, that are, have been regulating short-term rentals. Pros and cons, and I, again, want to be balanced, I don't want to feel like anybody thinks I'm going one way or the other, in some jurisdictions, they, they regulate short-term rentals, their argument has been that the short-term rentals, or sometimes like Airbnb or other ones like that, they say that that takes away from the stock of affordable housing for long-term folks that are there. Or that it can hurt the community fabric, because I've actually seen Airbnbs, where five or six cars are coming in and out of a driveway, and then the other neighbors are like, what's all this activity going on, or what are these parties going on, whatever. So that is a reason why some regulate short-term rentals. I will say, as you see here, potential legislation, the North, state of North Carolina has already looked, has legislation that they're looking at, and has been in committee to not let cities regulate, regulate short-term rentals, so that, that they view that as an overreach, and that goes to the next part, which is, you know, thinking of short-term rentals can be, think of the landowner and private property rights, that is a source of income for many people, is to rent out, rent out a unit, and, and honestly, private property rights are very important. Let's, and let's think how the wonderful people of the Outer Banks, this is, folks are independent, hard-working, and I, I see folks who, who have accessory dwellings to, to give, you know, to have some income, and where they work two jobs, or an extra job and a side gig, or whatever, folks work hard, it's a high cost of living out here, so trying to make ends meet is really important, so, you know, we certainly see the importance of folks trying to do everything they can to be able to stay in this wonderful place, so, again, trying to achieve some balance here, this is hard, but, again, this is a philosophical issue, I'm not trying to sway anybody one way or the other, I'm just trying to illustrate that there are pros and cons for each of the, each of these issues, and it's going to be important, but I guess at the end of the day, you think about quality of life, so you got to ask questions, you know, can those who grew up here live here? Can those who work here live here? And can we attract and retain residents and workers? I mean, these are some fundamental questions that go to the quality of life here, and we want, we want to make sure that, that we make this wonderful place available for those who grew up here, or those who live here, those who are working so hard to serve the community, and certainly, these are good reasons for us to talk about affordable housing. Now, I'll go ahead and end, end the presentation there, certainly, certainly happy to consider any of the short-term and long-term issues. Certainly, certainly happy to consider any of the short-term and long-term issues further, but want to make sure to give you an update, not just on the long-term things we're working on with the comp plan and potentially ordinances, but also the short-term things that we're already doing right now to try and push forward, the pilot project that exemplifies the leadership of this board of commissioners.
All right, does the board want to discuss it a little bit, or wait until the next meeting? It's up to y'all. If you want to discuss it right now while it's fresh, well, I think probably should, but it's up to y'all.
I have one question. I'm going to back up a little bit, about this Cypress Cove issue. About the Cypress Cove?
Oh, yes.
They were designated to slash, to have how many, four lots as affordable housing, but since they changed hands, it is not affordable housing now?
From what we, from what I saw, is that five out of the 32 lots were designated as affordable at that time. And, from what we also saw, is that the ordinance was repealed requiring long-term affordability. We've seen in other jurisdictions how you can have deed restrictions that have a maximum amount of, or a minimum amount of time to hold the property, or a maximum amount that it can appreciate each year before you sell it, and so you still get some equity, but it doesn't just get flipped within a month, or a year, or whatever. So, we've seen that in other jurisdictions, but in this particular case, I don't see evidence that those deed restrictions happened, presumably because that part of the ordinance was repealed in 2010.
2010, okay.
Yep.
So, not originally was affordable housing? Is that a yes or no answer?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Was it ever the five housing units affordable housing in the original?
Um...
Do you know? Do you know?
Yeah.
We were, from what we were told, is they were affordable housing, that some of the records, though, indicate like gifts and transfers, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit tricky for me to answer since it's before my time, but that was, there were five lots identified out of the 32 that were to be, to be affordable housing, and we're happy to look further.
Identified, identified.
Yes, ma'am.
They were. Yes or no?
They were identified as being subject to the requirements of affordable housing. I don't, but since I don't have property records from the county in front of me, all I have is the dates, dates in which they transferred, the amount of transfer, and certainly, I can give that to you after the meeting, I've got the example right here, if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
What'd you say the current capacity was for wastewater treatment plant? Or, what are we operating at right now?
Right now, we're operating at 52%, based on the last discharge minor report and the other, other reports that come out of the wastewater treatment plant, and that's, that was, we were discussing it with the engineer at our kickoff meeting. We've seen it, we've seen that number go above in areas of high flow. We've even seen it go high when the west wind blows, where we get infiltration. But, but right now, we thought it was important to kind of see, to not, to see, not just where we're at now, but also where we'd be at with build out of our current properties, the way they're zoned, and also have the opportunity to build a model. We don't want this to be a one-time capacity study, we want this to be a model where we can add columns and say, okay, this property came online, but it was lower density, or this one got a variance and it got a higher density. We want to track this so that we can always have a good projection of what our wastewater treatment plant, instead of guessing, we want to know.
What's the number the state requires us to upgrade our wastewater treatment plant?
Yes, at 80%, we're obliged to proceed with design of the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. At 90%, we need to be taking steps toward construction. So, for those, for us, those are, those are critical milestones for us, and we all, the report will identify those step, those stages and timing also.
Who'd you say was doing the study for us?
Oh, who's in the study?
Who's doing the study?
Yes, sir. It's being done by Green Engineering, they're the same firm that's currently doing our wastewater asset inventory and assessment, so that also helped us save some money, since they already had access to a lot of these files in terms of the piping, the lift stations' capacity, and things like that. So, we had a head start on that one as well.
Would it be appropriate for us to put a cap on the capacity, like 75%?
Not... We, since we're not, we're not, I know the state has the requirements at 80 and 90%, certainly it's up to a board if they want to establish a different threshold at which we assess what development is coming on board and things like that. Hopefully, though, this model will give us the information, so the board, if the board does choose to make some other kind of threshold, we can certainly give you that information.
I think, thank you, James, this was, this was a great early step. Obviously, we're a long way from action and got a lot to figure out, but it starts with this, and figuring out what those things that we have to figure out are. So, I appreciate it, and good work.
Thank you, sir.
James, can you go back to the slide, probably more towards the beginning, where you have the five or more units for lots, and the 20% would be affordable, and you have the dollar figure, 183, 200 for...
Absolutely. I'm going to try and get a... Oh, yes, that's slide number 12, with my colleague there. So, this is one, and this was just a, our ordinances on affordable housing, here's, here's the entire chapter four, so trying to summarize it for a single slide, I don't want to leave out anything material. We were trying to get kind of the highlights of what they were trying to accomplish, with the focus on for-sale units here, and it was focused on residential development.
What year was that?
The, let's see, let me hold up. So, this ordinance, I'm just, I'm just reading right here of the chapter four, affordable housing, and it's 2004, but it had been amended in 2005, and then the 2010 amendments as well. So, this goes back at least 17 years with amendments in the intervening time.
In other words, we've been talking affordable housing for 17 years?
Yes, sir.
Well, says something.
Besides the, what we're doing with the pilot program, are there other next steps to, clear next steps to take, besides the comp plan is going to help us define what we want to do and answer these questions, but are there, are there other things that we need to be doing, and decisions we need to be making in the meantime?
Sure, yes, thank you, Commissioner. The, a couple things. So, first off, when we're talking about the current pilot project, our .909 acre property that the board had talked about doing as a pilot, if the board wants us to go ahead and do request proposals and start, engage the interest, you know, we could do that sooner rather than later, we've got enough data now to get that going within the next 30 to 60 days if you want us to put out an RFP. So, that would be a quick action step if the board chose to take that approach, and you don't need a motion to do that, you can just, if we have consent to the board, I can go ahead and get that, get that started in the next 30 to 60 days, and then keep you posted. Also, though, other pilot, that's a pilot project, it's meant to be a demonstrator, meant to be an example. While we're doing that, and while we're doing the comp plan, we can also identify either other town-owned parcels, or parcels that are, you know, within the town and may be available for, for something like this. So, if the board wants us to look at other land opportunities while we're doing this concurrently, we're happy to do it. I know there was some land purchase that was relatively low, it was designed, intended for future stormwater improvements, but what if a portion of that is available for some housing, partial stormwater and partial housing? I don't know the answer to that, and certainly, we've, we've got this first pilot project on, already underway, but if that's something the board wants to look at, absolutely. You know, there's plenty we can do, and I'm just glad, I'm just thrilled the board is attacking this problem with the very first project.
I know you say you don't need a motion, I mean, does anybody have, I mean, is there a reason not, that's why we annexed that pilot property? I mean, is there a reason not to start?
I've brought this up a couple of years ago, I'm sorry I didn't know.
Yeah, go ahead.
But, on this property, I was approached by the adjacent landowner. If the mania would be willing to sell this square that off right there, where that little jog is. It's like 15 feet, I guess, maybe 20 feet?
Yeah, um...
I never got to answer yea or nay on that one.
The, yeah, the, that property owner has contacted the town, and what did not really want us, well, I'm confused, I'm confused how to phrase that. So, I'm not sure that that's an option on the table, and this parcel's not in-town limits, that parcel is outside of the town, and based on what I saw in the public records, it actually has a property, a property dispute with the adjacent landowner to the, to the southwest of us. So, and that's actually shown in the Dare County GIS, so, I'm happy to decide, to chat afterwards and see if perhaps we're getting different messages from different representatives of the landowner. Happy to have that discussion.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'm starting to get an answer.
Well, let me ask you this, what would we lose, what would we lose? What would we lose by telling the town manager to proceed without a motion, because we can pull him back anytime we want to? See how far we go with it?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, we annexed that property for this use, and, you know, I mean, doesn't even have a good reason why we should be guiding you to do something else.
What's feelings of the board? Somebody's got to be very vocal.
I think, let's go for it. I said, we've been waiting long enough, and like you said, we've been tossing this around with, not this particular project, but affordable housing for 17 years. Personally, I thought it was already almost there a while back, so, yes.
If I wasn't clear, I agree with that.
I do as well.
All right, I'm hearing consensus.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we're happy to prepare a draft request for proposals then, to start to engage...
All right, unless there's any objection, I'm hearing consensus, we'll authorize the town manager move forward deliberately and slowly, and we'll pull you back anytime we want to. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Let's move on.
Item number six on the agenda, this is public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board of commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during this period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole, and not one individual. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person, or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the lectern and identify yourself so your statements can be recorded.
Darryl, you know me, in school, I didn't like school, and this is why I didn't like it. I didn't want to talk about doing things, I wanted to do things. If you look at that presentation...
Mel, Mel, can you speak a little louder, so we can really hear you?
If you, if you look at this presentation of that piece of land, I would caution you to move forward with the wetland delineation that's shown. I would offer you a name of an individual for a second look. Reason I'm saying that, if it was your property, you owned it, that's a $50,000 lot, should it have a second review for another determination? And I have a person that's one of the best in the state that I know of, that works in the area, and I'd be glad to share that name. Not only is it value in dollars and cents, but it also could mean an extra place for someone to live. What I want to talk to you all about tonight is, our family is attempting to build 16 units in town. I don't call them affordable, I surely don't classify as somebody essential or not essential. They're for year-round housing is what they're for. They're small houses, is what they are. I've worked with the town for, you know, I had hair when I started, I weighed 15 pounds less, and I didn't have, get braces on my teeth because my children want an open casket when I die. I'm frustrated. 90% of the town staff, we've worked through it, and I appreciate that, but I am stuck on a ditch, or two ditches. Y'all might know about that ditch that I'm talking about. There was a ditch that's on our property, I'm going to call it north-south ditch, that I want to move, or we want to move, six or eight feet. There's another ditch running parallel to Bowser Town, that's on our property, that I want to fill. I cannot make plans to move forward until I get direction from the town. The hang-up is, in the ordinance, you can't fill a ditch, okay? I respect that. It also says in the ordinance, the adjacent property owners can't put water on your property either, okay? There's the problem. There's adjacent property owners that are going through that. We don't want to simply solve our problem, we want to address the issues of our surrounding neighborhood. It's simple. You move the ditch five foot, you put that water in a state asset that's currently located there. I asked for a permit, I met with James Ayers. I asked for a permit to do this. There is no permit to do this. I'm stopped. We cannot do this because of a bureaucracy that is unnecessary. This is simple stuff. Unlike the presentation you saw, that is probably four years' worth of work to try to accomplish housing in the town. It's not complicated. And I'm asking for direction, and I'm asking direction for your town staff to help me resolve this. If there is no permit that you could obtain, what do we do? I've been told, well, we'll create a permit, okay? We'll create a permit, we'll talk to the lawyers, and we'll create a permit. Well, if there is no permit, it would seem in my simple world that we design something and present it to the town to put the water, to move the ditch to a property line, five, 10 feet, and put that water in a state asset that goes out of a ditch system. So, that's what I wanted to bring to your attention. Until we get focused on the simple ways of doing things, these issues that are so critical in our county and in our town are not going to be solved. It's been 17 years now. So, I would welcome any input to move this project forward. Thank you.
We can't answer them, just, James, go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not sure we're looking for an answer on a legal issue right now.
No, but, I know, I said, I said, go ahead, with public comment.
Yes, sir, I didn't see any other public comment, and we don't have zoom, so are you asking me to move on to the next item on the agenda?
I've got a question, can I ask a question?
Not during public comment, we've never done that. We ask a question after public comment period.
Okay.
You want to ask if anybody else wants to be heard?
Yes, I, I was just looking at the audience, see if they wanted to come up, but I don't think we have any takers from the other members. All right.
All right, you ready to close it?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll close the public comment period, now go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number, the next item on the agenda is an addition. This is under old business, this is under old business, as mentioned in the modification to the, to the agenda. In the interest of transparency, I ask that this item be placed under old business, not the consent agenda. The board previously set a public hearing for land use plan amendments for the September 15th meeting. You may have seen the advertisements for the public hearing in the newspaper, on the website, or posted at town hall. However, our CAMA representative reached out to the town to let us know about supplemental requirements not needed in our traditional public hearings. That is, the CAMA land use plan amendment notice and documents need to be placed at the county courthouse, following submission of the draft notice to CAMA for review. In order to maintain compliance, we will need to reschedule the public hearing, re-advertise it, post a notice, and have the relevant documents available for inspection at the Dare County courthouse. Therefore, I'm requesting that the board should vote to reschedule the public hearing for land use plan amendments for October 20th.
All right, can we have a motion to reschedule the planning that James is talking about?
No, no.
All right, motion is a second?
Second.
Second, is a move in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post ayes, have it.
Yes, sir. Next up on the agenda, this is item number 7A. This is the Magnolia Pavilion space utilization. In this particular case, Magnolia Pavilion has served a number of uses over the years, including business activities, special events, and much more. A portion of the enclosed space at the facility has been leased to various tenants in the past. The most recent tenant was, had a lease that was signed just before I arrived here at the town, it was Fay Davis Edwards, later branded as Water Street Studio. This tenant has vacated the space and premises and moved nearby. The space is currently unoccupied, and we have been receiving... The space is currently unoccupied, and we have been receiving multiple inquiries about that space from prospective tenants. Now, it is important to note that we had, we had had some money in the budget to have a community conversation and figure out, you know, what to do, you know, public engagement, community conversations about not just the Magnolia Pavilion, but that whole open space. And even, of course, there's a Magnolia Lane there as well, which is certainly a key component of all this. So we, we know that that was planned for later this year as we got into the winter months, so that we could have more public engagement, especially after the season died down, and we could have both residents and business owners there. Now, the, the question became, do we want to, even while that conversation's going on, is it necessary to have that space vacant, especially with folks asking to lease it? And the question that I was putting out to the Board is, we could put out a request for proposals to tenants, so that there could be some occupancy there during the period while we envision what's, what can be done with that area. In this particular case, we'd look to the North Carolina General Statutes, and they have certain rules about leases, so it's pretty easy to do a lease of less than a year. Whereas if you go over a year and up to ten years, that requires some specific things like, you know, public note, public hearing, vote by the Board, et cetera. What, what I was suggesting we might do is find, maybe put out a, is to put out a request for proposals, see what these various tenants want to do, but to be fair to all the prospective tenants, we want to make sure that they all have an equal level playing field. By doing that, we need to tell them, though, what are the criteria that we need for the space? So a couple of the criteria that I had suggested in my staff report, I mean, one, of course, economic factors. It's easy to say, well, how much revenue is generated from this? This isn't really a big moneymaker, but revenue should be considered. But also, how about the other economic factors? What if the tenant here creates a job, or two, or whatever? I always say every job is precious. If they create a job, that's also an economic factor. How about another factor would be activation of the space? Because this is, you know, this is in a particular location. Does their space bring, draw people downtown, or draw people to visit the surrounding businesses, and things like that? If someone wants to make it a writer's space for a single writer, that's not likely to draw a lot of people. But if they have another type of business, well, it could draw a lot of people there if they have classes, or activities, or have a business that will come in. I also mentioned compatibility. It's, for example, compatibility of prospective use with the surrounding properties. You know, it may be silly to have another business exactly like a business across the lane, or how about a business that has very loud noises? All through, a sawmill there would not be very conducive to the residents who live above the commercial space, so, so is it compatible? And also flexibility. It's probably preferred to have someone who's a shorter-term tenant, or is willing to be a shorter-term tenant, depending on what happens with the visioning, as opposed to somebody who says, well, I need a ten-year lease, or I can't do it. So having some flexibility in the lease term and things like that, I think, might be important. So those are some sample factors we could put in an RFP. What I was looking for the Board was, you know, I can put together an RFP as a matter of operations, and put it out there and advertise it and all the rest, but I was just, my, my goal was to seek the Board's guidance as to, you know, is this something we want to do, is to rent that space while we decide, you know, what the long-term vision is for that area? And if so, we can go ahead and put that out, and then bring that back to the Board as we get responses to that request for proposals.
You want suggestions from the Board, or comments? I mean, do you want them?
It.
James, I'm talking to you.
What I was seeking really was, was guidance, because like I say, a short-term lease, you know, we put out the request proposal, and honestly, I could bring the, all the proposals back to the Board if they would like, so you could have a chance to see, you know, what is being proposed, what are the ideas? And we would, we could bring that back to this Board. I just wanted to make sure, though, by doing that, I didn't want to get ahead of this Board, and somehow there's an objection. No, no, we got to hold on to that space, or we've got a town use, or whatever. One of the rules is try, try not to get ahead of your Board, so I was hoping that, to make sure that there weren't any objections to proceeding with some kind of request.
What's Fearing's at board? Comments?
I would say certainly if there's an avenue to make money while we, while we're deciding, we should do that.
I agree, and as well, I believe the Water Street Studio, Fay Davis and Donna Manny-Morsette, they had an excellent little, you know, that served them well until they moved, and I think, you know, I know it created foot, you know, foot traffic there. They had some interesting programs available, and, you know, they still will right next door. To me, it's less about the money, more about, like you say, creating a job, it'd be an incubator business building possibly, so, you know, if you don't have anything straight away, you know, and we have people interested, I, I think we need to go for it, take a look at what we got, who would be the best fit there.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's life and activity that kind of breeds life and activity, and whatever we do, whether it's a park or a skyscraper, you know, it's, it's going to take a while to get there, and so there's no point in not having someone that's going to produce money and, you know, life and activity and jobs, so I'm all.
James, it sounds like consensus is that you proceed with your suggestions, see where we go with it as far as proposals, the rental purposes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, members. Then the next item on the agenda, I guess we'd move on to item number eight, which is Mayor and Commissioner comments.
Yeah. Eddie? Comments?
I have none. Well, I do have a comment. I think this affordable housing thing is going to be multifaceted, so we do need to be a developer for small projects and public-private partnerships, but I think it's equally as important to work with developers to help them develop their property into affordable avenues. You know, he's willing to do the work quicker than we can do it. We should, we should assist whatever way the local government can. That's what local government should be doing. That's it. Thank you.
Christine?
Can I say?
No comment? You're on?
I'm good.
Okay. Daryl?
Let's get back to Malcolm's thing. Have you worked with the Board of, Planning and Zoning Board on this problem? The Planning and Zoning Board?
I want to the attention of the planning staff in our great presentation to the planning board.
Is the planning acceptable to you, or what, can they do anything for you, or?
Daryl, it's a simple, it's simple. And it's really a simple. And I think. My guess is, if an ordinance has to be created for a permit, that it has to come back to y'all. Okay, so to do that, we can't do it in mid-month, we'd have to be doing it in October. And, and this is an issue that's been ongoing for some time, and it will require, I believe, your decision unless you give the manager and the planning director leeway to make a decision. Again, my hang-up is, there is no permit available. Okay? So it is reasonable that the town should get a drawing from us of what our proposal is on handling the water. That's reasonable. In other words, what size pipe we're going to put it in, what manhole to connect to what county, state asset? That's reasonable, and willing to do that. One of the reasons I want to move the ditch, Daryl, is we don't want an open ditch. Okay? We want to put a culvert the whole length of the ditch, so that it's not open. We don't feel like that's safe. So if, if the, since there is no permit, if the authority is given to the staff to try to work this out, that would be of a great benefit. And it, still, that's just the ditch. By doing that, then that allows us to draw the plans that are necessary to go to the planning board and the Board of Commissioners. And what we're attempting to do in this project is meet the exact ordinance of the town. The correct density, we're asking for nothing other than the exact rule of the town. Okay?
Yeah.
Anything?
I mean, couldn't we get, have him submit his plan to the Planning and Zoning Board, and let them look at it, and see if they can work through this problem?
Well, I, I don't know. Listen, James, would we have approved the ditch before it went to the planning board? The ditch being moved?
It, it depends on the process. This, what's not being, well.
I can't, do what?
We're venturing, we're venturing into some legal matters now, and I'm not necessarily comfortable at this point having, having, having that discussion, because there are some things here that sound very different from what I heard before, so I'm.
Well, but this board needs to know what they are.
Ye- yes, sir.
We have a right to know.
Absolutely, yes, sir. So.
I mean, it shouldn't be between you and two or three of your members on your staff. I mean, the buck stops here.
Yes, sir. The Board, the Board is the elected body, and of course, I will do their will, and also follow the orders.
I think, though, James and Melissa and probably Ben, you know, might need some, I think it's a reasonable expectation to kind of get our situation.
Maybe they need guidance from us.
Together, so that we know what we're looking at, you know, possibly. I mean, I don't, maybe it's, maybe you can just tell us what you got here, but maybe it's appropriate to kind of understand, and maybe you have to do more research. I don't know. I don't, I don't know the, I've seen the ditch, and I think, I don't want to get in the way of something that someone's trying to do to develop their land that's going to benefit the town as well, like Eddie was saying, but we certainly don't want to, you know, we want to understand both sides of the situation before we make any kind of decision as well.
Yep.
From a legal standpoint, as well as operational, what you guys have already come up with.
Great. Thank you.
Eddie?
Well, I do apologize, Mayor and Board, that I was attempting to speak out of turn during public comment, but my question was the same thing that Commissioners Collins have asked. Has it been to the planning board? And it sounds like it has. Has it? And so it, it sounds like that, like I said, I apologize first, that's what I wanted to know. And if it has been to the planning board, then we need to know what the results was, because obviously it wasn't, it wasn't satisfied, or is it still on negotiation with the planning board? What happened once Mr. Fearing went to the planning board?
I don't think he's been to.
If I can figure that out, the specific ditch did not go to the planning board. Okay? I have three minutes and a presentation to explain to the planning, I thought I was on the agenda.
Well, it's open for a discussion now, and of course, you should have gotten on the agenda, but it weren't on there. I don't know why it weren't.
Well, no, that was just miscommunication.
Yeah, okay.
Rather than bother that. But to make it clear, I did not go to the planning board and say, I'd like to move this ditch. Okay, it did it. I showed the project, okay, the layout, which is the same layout that is out on the highway now. But I cannot move forward until the ditch issue is resolved. And my point is, there is no permit. There is no permit that exists in the town. Is that correct, Mr. Fearing?
Okay, so, and I want to make sure the Planning and Zoning Board doesn't get, there is clarity with the Planning and, with the Planning and Zoning Board. So first off, a presentation was made to the Planning and Zoning Board about this project in general. It was not an application. There was no permit application submitted that the Planning and Zoning Board would have heard, deliberated on, and either sent to you, or issued a permit. So there was no such application. But, but I, it was important for our, our friend here to present his vision to the, to the Planning and Zoning, because he wanted to share his idea, what he was trying to do. It's certainly a laudable cause to try and build these units there, and we certainly welcome that. In terms of, and I'm going to be, again, very careful here, because I don't want to tread on any legal issues, but the, the request is not to develop the property. Okay? The request was, we originally thought we were going to have a permit application come in, but then the request was clarified, the new request was clarified that it was a ditch relocation only, so not a development permit, which would be, could be allowed by right, based on what we're hearing, but we haven't seen that application. So the question was, can a ditch relocation be done? A ditch relocation only, not a development permit, not anything. Normally, we would have seen the ditch relocation incorporated in a development plan, the site plan submitted to Planning and Zoning Board, and that type, and that's the normal process. But we understand the developer desires to relocate the ditch without going to that step. There is nothing called a ditch relocation permit in our ordinance, but there are other things that have to do with the floodplain. The question is, the request is asked to fill, and there's things in the ordinance about fill, and up to one foot, et cetera. So this is a new request that's been made. We were also given information from Dare County, that Dare, we were told that Dare County had done this recently, had done the easement relocation for stormwater, but when we spoke to the county, they said, well, this was just for an easement relocation, not a ditch relocation. They had a different process for ditch relocation. So we're desperately searching through all the ethical, our ordinances, the general statutes, trying to get a quick answer, so we're diligently working on it. So we can assure you, we want this project, we support the ditch relocation, and we're trying our best to do it in compliance with ordinances and statutes, and make sure we don't get into legal trouble and put this Board at risk, or this community at risk.
So to, to, just kind of Cliff Notes version here, it sounds like you are in the process of figuring out what the process is for Malcolm to apply for a permit, or go before planning and zoning, or something, but that, there's already, you're already working on it.
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
In my understanding, I would have something on mid-month. I have a first amendment on mid-month. Again, to, to present, to develop a plan, to bring to the planning board, is ten, fifteen thousand dollars, okay, in engineering case. I don't want to do that until the ditch is answered, because once the ditch, ditch is answered, then we can spend the money on the engineering part. Okay, so I hope that.
I've got a stupid question. I'm way in life, okay? I know nothing about the land development. If there's no permit, is a permit required to do this?
So there are various permits referred to in our ordinance that may or may not be applicable, for which we, for which we are seeking clarification. Further, there's some clar, question as to, our ordinance also talks about, is it applicable to a traditional development permit? But we've just heard that the applicant does not want to do, or the future applicant does not want to do the things required for a development permit for which this would normally be a part. So we are, but also, we were guided to Dare County, where they had a process, so we looked.
I'm going to take county out of it. This is town many.
No, no, but that's what was brought to us by the developer.
I'm like Richie, I don't care what the county does. County ain't in this.
Yes, sir.
What's stopping him from going out there tomorrow and moving his ditch? Anything?
He, I, I think he's trying to be, be helpful.
I understand he's trying to be fair and square about this.
And, and follow the ordinances, and because some of our, one part of our ordinances say, say you can't fill a ditch, then want, don't want to run afoul of that. He's trying to, he's trying to seek to do it the right way without getting in trouble. But I also think there, you know, there are some, there are still some remaining questions as to, as to which either existing permit is applicable, or which statutes apply. And especially the issue about water coming onto a property, that's another one that has legal ramifications as well. So we want to make sure we do this in the proper way, and we are, we've been reading hundreds of pages of information trying to get this sorted as quickly as we can, and we will continue to be diligent about it, and we really appreciate the support.
Again, it's, it's a simple thing. It's being made to a complicated, it is a permit, you move the ditch. And in fact, the town, some time ago, James, James, Clint's candidate, some years ago, he wanted to dig out the ditch. I think he did, of course. And we allowed him to do it. I told James, and James, I'm here with, I, I tried to use, I said, James, you can dig the ditch out, but I don't know what caused me to problem in the neighborhood in the future. If it was flooding the neighborhood out there.
Those, I mean, all, those two sections, it was flooding. I went out there.
If you look at.
I didn't go look at the ditch, but I went.
It's not a flowing ditch, they have waters coming from, 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 and it's not their fault, it's just the way it is. And I'm not trying to cut them off, I'm trying to size the pipe that will accommodate.
Did, did you say the town dug the ditch?
The town dug the ditch.
The town dug the ditch to help those two projects out.
The town cleaned it. The town cleaned it, twice, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, Richie. I'm with you.
Okay.
I don't understand all this damn stuff, but.
And legal ramifications, it's, it's, it's put a, go to the ditch. And legal ramifications, it's, it's, it's put a broken ditch in every day.
What, wait a minute.
And it's putting the border in a fight that's there.
The town dug the ditch. Did they have permission to dig the ditch?
Yes, they dug, they dug the ditch out. There's a distinct ditch there, and I can't remember.
Who to get the permission from?
Two foot, three foot, or five foot.
I think the state originally dug it.
No, the, the.
The ditch was already there.
Part of the drainage system for the whole town.
Okay.
The town has cleaned it.
It doesn't need general statutes. It doesn't need years to figure out. It, it's a simple thing, that James has an engineering background, Melissa is well-trained and competent. I'll hire an engineer, draw a, a diagram of what an engineer would do. Ask John Deluca if he could do it for me.
You can't present nothing to the zoning planning board till you find out about the ditch.
It's ditching.
You're, you're going to catch twenty-two because of time.
It, it sounds like James may have told you that expect to have an answer by the middle of the month. Do we, do we think by the workshop meeting, we would have a, an answer in what steps Malcolm needs to take?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, I hate to tell you to wait a few more weeks, but I know you've been waiting a long time to do something. I mean, if we can have some information for you in a couple of weeks, then.
More than acceptable, and in, in our meeting, I asked Mr. Ayers, could I participate in this ahead of the meeting, so we both collaborated.
Let me ask you a question. Who owns the property the ditch runs on?
MK Realty, which is a family.
It's part of the group that owns the two units out there, is that right?
Yeah, it's.
And the ditch was dug.
The waters in the water.
The ditch was dug to help them out, because there was knee-deep water out there standing.
The ditch was dug, was dug, it was existing.
Now, Daryl just told me, Daryl just told me that the state dug it and the town supported, is that right, Daryl? Is that what you just told me?
The state cleaned it, I mean, the town cleaned it. James cleaned it up for you, right?
Cleaned it up, that's right. He came to me exactly at the school.
Okay.
I thought you told me the state.
The state did do the drainage system.
Now, the ditch parallel to the highway is not, that is on our property. Parallel to the town, I mean, parallel to the town, the road is a culvert. Is that right, Melissa?
Yeah, this, this ditch goes.
When we went down there, yeah.
It does not, it does not, you're on, on stormwater now.
When we went down there, we looked at it.
There's something there.
There's, there's a concrete culvert there, right?
I cannot remember that. There is something there.
Well, we.
There's also a water.
We saw it, and I was with you, we saw it.
Well, I'll tell you what, I, I tell you what, I tell you what, we're seeing government real action, and no, it ain't worth, it ain't worth a damn.
Well, I mean, it's just frustrating.
That's what I mean.
And, and to be fair, we could use the property for other uses, other than your own house. It has more value, of course, for use than your own house.
Well, I think Jason might have the best idea, is let James go ahead. If James can bring it back to us the next meeting with some kind of solution, one way or the other, because we haven't been asked legal counsel yet, and I don't think he's ready to get into it unless he is.
Mm-mm.
In, in, in actuality, with this one, I'm, I'm going to have a conflict, and I won't be able to advise staff on this one.
Okay, you mean we'll have to get another attorney?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, conflict, conflict of interest?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sir.
Okay, that's all right. You've answered your question. Say no more.
I got one thing I want to say. We keep hearing James McLeese, James McLeese, and he cleaned the ditches out, because he really cared about Manio and the pierce of town in Manio.
Oh, yeah, James did.
And, of course, y'all all know this. This speaks of his dedication. And not only it speaks of how dedicated he was, and how the town stayed immaculate, but, um, speaking of him, I, I just, just wanted to say that, that, you know, he did everything to keep it clean.
This man wants to build seven, eight, ten houses out there and sell them not as affordable.
Sixteen.
Rental, rental property, and we're holding him back? That don't make sense. Okay, let's finish up here. Betty? Did I go to you? You haven't had your piece yet, Betty?
Yeah, I have.
Okay, Richie?
Uh, I'm done, thank you.
Jason?
I mean, just to.
Well, wait a minute.
I appreciate your patience, Malcolm, and I appreciate you trying to take the steps to do the right thing, instead of saying, "There's no permitting process, let me go do it." Um, you know. You know, like, like Eddie said, housing and a lot of things are multifaceted, and there's a lot of different angles to it, and we've got the, our first step and the things that the town can control, and, you know. It's, it's public and private, and it's a lot, you can spend your own money a lot quicker than you can spend the entire town's. And I know the, getting caught in the red tape is frustrating, but, you know, we need to follow the process and, and do things the right way, and I know that it's frustrating to us, too, but hopefully, we can get some information and, and remove roadblocks so you can do something that's going to benefit the town. That's it.
All right. All right, James, it's going to be incumbent on you to bring up something the next, are we going to meet the fifteenth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Bring something the fifteenth.
Yes, sir.
Legal attorney, if you had to go to Chicago. We need this resolved, one way or the other. All right, nothing else coming forward aboard?
I'm going to recess until September fifteenth.
Okay, there's a second movement, a second that we recess until September fifteenth at five o'clock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, post. Meeting recessed.